Martin Malagazi.
Eh, ngela smamele. Ngela smamele. Oh, imaga ngani puti? Ngela smamele oh.
Ungobeze.
Ungobeze. Nga smamele ungobeze.
May I only just listen to?
Ninga pelela nimo.
Okay, may please be patient with Ngobeze?
Inda.
What is the problem?
Ninga pelela nimo. Ninga, ninga, ninga pelemo. You must tolerate one another, ame?
Please tolerate one another.
Nitanda. Mshangu Ngobeze zuzun chat, anas?
We all need to love each other.
Anivuni chat? Mea zala, mshak. Kubeza Ngobeze.
Continue.
Ben sato, nyatrazutu nsugabranja. Eh, amkubeza kuna dapo. Ngapansu uwe maeni ezek, ngalana ngakakona. Ngapansu organization Ikulamanda.
I am from the Kulamanda organization.
Amkuzukwada namane, eh, oba vele, ngifirete. Kotwa, esenguzwele abafutsele kulume. Kotwa ngumbuzo ngje, kumbeina maesel. Puti, umare skalekwa, ngu process zwaala. Ngoba ngentola, mpagatu kala ngazule. Ngeswana skala ngazule, ngalane.
Um, my, I won't be long because I've just arrived. My question, who are we supposed to complain to so that our grievances could be heard? Because the communities are all are having the similar issues.
Eh, rafushanya na njembla, mbuya ngapansu wazo, eh, maeni zakalele ya ndawoleya. Eh, ya ndawoleya, ngintanza ngzalulegi ona, mkulelegi ona, ogunenge, ila ngabe sele osho onu. Ngufikile ogunenge.
Uh, we have so many issues in the area. We have the mines in where I grew up.
Eh, namshangio, onga sense zaga lutu, eh, ngonwa juwi velo. Waagili ngani ndawo, waagwa yonke into. So many.
We, we used to plant in that area. Um, there are so many things that have affected us that we used to do before, but we cannot do it anymore. Previously, we used to plant.
A manzi akona kuja bafutu bash.
Um, even the quality of water, as they have said before, is affected.
Eh, izindu zatabu, msha abainbala uttabu angazi ngakala nganani.
Um.
Mshangu five kilometers angazi, puti ngakala nganani.
Our hair, our houses are cracking. Even the land is eroding. I could just measure and say it's five kilometers of the eroded space.
Eh, maani, nyakuluma mpagati uchigubu oshukasikiti akadend.
But if you want to consult, then you just get in trouble.
Eh, mene, eh, ubelela, upilile, okunye ngai. Anga zuvmela ana mene. Nomangifirete, kotwa, senzwele, nyenzwa, obe kuluma, obebebebe. Neskala zosalo, oku, irizinalo, oku, mene, ngaysaitla.
Even though I arrived late, but my, 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 my opinion is that I will not allow this bill.
Eh, bo ngan, ngan, mshangu, kubebalebe funuseka, banu, mpagali, namakosi mbalebe funuseka. Ngoba, eh, snengkinga bu.
Um, maybe first we need to educate our community, even Amakosi also.
Uzo banu bazie, bevume indaba yazie.
So that people will be aware, if they, if they adopt this bill, they will be allowing something that they know.
Ogokwena, amvunumoshis kado ngani da, mbanbeze. Ogokwena, urumeni. Agobe bu epege, pala maenzi zidangata, teli, ngumakuta, ogobe epege, magwenzaga la izindo. Ungapeali, imali, pambili, egbo, ulungu zubandu before. Bese zenzengzi, ndangale, mbele zenzengai.
Um, also, the government also needs to look at the dangers that may be imposed rather than focusing on money.
Bese pende, kuge ilu, ukwenya, gwaefan.
Um. Ukwenya?
Ukwenya, gwaefan.
Well, swallowing is the same.
Anga, nomangzwaala, rafelman, puti ukwenya gwaefan.
I'm not sure if you understand what I'm saying. Swallowing is the same thing, it's the same.
Ngitumela e message, urumeni, puti ukwenya gwaefan.
I'm just sending this message to our government that swallowing is the same.
Agosha lukwala, agosha mabfule e kampa, eh, ndawen, citizen says zaga, badi, si zoli maala ukwenani. Si zoli maala, akomse bezee, siyakendezela, siabosh, siabulawa, gozeyo, nganatudan.
We, we don't want an issue where they allow a company in our area, but we do not benefit from it.
Ngitukulume, ngasa banu, baku ukwenya gwaefan, ngutma ela mbile, eswile, uinkengi, ngibla, ngimathujin, ngabo.
So I'm saying to our government, please note that we are all hungry, we're all the same.
You know, taking someone's life should not be an easy thing like killing a cockroach.
Tati pilo, mutukpale ngabaksite, lula njengatubulali, iphe.
Um, when I told my daughter that I was coming to Kwazulu Natal, she says, hey! Bayabulala, in Kwazulu Natal.
Ngesati, nchendata, zamutingizosaga, zulnatalu, te, eh, aphe, ngoba.
You know, but I'm making a point.
You might get killed.
That you people of Kwazulu Natal need to protect life.
Ninabantwa zulatalu, falele, ni vigele, impinwe.
None of these honorable members, whereas they are not even from this province, have in their backs anything to protect life. The people who can protect life are the people of Kwazulu Natal themselves.
Ilabamate ngaba na, ukona moyo ngasi koni, taipete, ukuvigele impilo ya banu Kwazulu Natal. Eh, abantwa zulatali, bo, nofunele, banvigele impilo ya.
Now we are speaking about climate change and the speakers are saying, it means that people are intimidated. They can't raise their views because they are afraid that they'll be killed and, and all of that. We can't accept that. It's wrong.
Asquazu, gue moge la, ogutige, abantu sita, bazo kuluma ngokuchita, wassamose zulubense, beti, banu guesa, bako, uzorale suvula, bu, ngoba, baza zitwala, sebe, sebe bulenyo.
I think this is the fourth speaker, speaking about intimidations, people being killed and all of that. It, that's lawlessness is just unacceptable.
Ngangutumutwastine, lezo kuluma ngokuti, oba ngabebe, paramsuvula, bantu bayabula, eh, ogu intofutse ngabugele, ilele, eh, ngafalele ngabiense.
But now, if you know, if I come to you and intimidate you, you go to the nearest police station. You open a case.
Kufanele, ngabumote, fiya, gue wesabi, safunilo haambe, we police station, we on report.
Eh, muzobula, eh, police station, manji?
Sabutu zobula, eh, police station.
Uzobula, ba mapoisa. Bayawatenga.
Bayawatenga, mapoisa.
I believe if you say, but they are working to get news, you saw them changing money.
Umuti bassebenza, bako shuti.
If you saw them changing money, you must get them arrested, both of them.
Babopise, wabonalabo.
Ayayaya. Let's not lose focus, must, let's speak to climate change. Um, I will speak to Pekitela in the Portfolio Committee of Public Safety to come here. Bazo kuluma naani majoro. Because, let's, manji, I don't want us to lose focus, preneso kuluma na, mientoza mapoisa, manji. Angzaz, let's, mene, we are here, climate. Eh, ngukuku, 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 zulu. Anit?
Kukuku, kuku, wesimose zulu.
Is kukuku, kukuku, wesimose zulu. All right, we, it's two o'clock. I'll take three hands this side.
Satisandla inda tuvleli society.
Ah. Shh. You are very intolerant.
Ninga ye zile?
Asbe zele na ne.
Executive mayor, next time when we come to Stenga, assist me TV. Because I want to say, Stenga, bayaslaza, eh, TV.
Next time when you come here, we won't bring the TV crew.
We, we will only bring Twitter.
We'll only bring Twitter, not the TV crew.
And WhatsApp. Because eh, TV, ni slaza guu yo.
We are embarrassing us on TV.
Ay, next, xaza, emgugundlu, asinfunmatota, napaya.
The TV crew, we don't want you.
We don't want you. So, three hands this side, three hands this side, three hands that side. At the top, mind dwindles, and then we close.
Si zotas, satisandla, jazimbalua, besese afan.
Are there three hands? Three hands, none. This side, one, two, three. Dwindosha. Moloni, dwindosha. Can you clap yourself a hand there, please?
Ngadi, ni alala, lapu, manangzani song. Ni right? Okay, nzangani, nganjegingbonu, ni right? Yes, yes. Agugun, agugun, muntovunu kuluma la. Again, right. Okay, these are the last four hands. Is it four? Is it four? Okay, these are the last four hands. Nomunga shiselo, nganjaa.
Are there chiefs here? Azif? You don't have chiefs. I welcome, of course. Okay, let's proceed, ma'am, and then we conclude.
Sessna kubega, mama.
Ngibingalela, abase tafle, nabase hambele, siilembe. Ngibingalele, bonke, abazo segela, lungutano, eslangenina ulan.
My thanks to the visitors.
Mrs. Titi Kumete. Okamu ga endwe, dwe.
I am Mrs. Titi Kumete from Dwe Dwe.
Eh, ngia bonka, ngia usegela lakulu, umteto segelo, okuluma ngi climate change.
Thank you, and I support the proposed bill on climate change.
Ngisale nipants, ngilalele, in kuluma, in inondoyami, velengai begala, pon sugakona, endwe, dwe. Ngenjela, lesimo sokukuku, tuka gue zulu, esesmoshe ngayo lapon sugakona.
Speakers took me back to where I come from in Dwe Dwe. We have really suffered seriously on climate change.
Imkwa koyotu, iya kukulega, umanga besamba, siyete lope mi, upu mutanga zila, ngoba, awazitet, noma, izoguya nawe, mienjela, umkwa koma kuzukuzungayo.
Roads have been eroded. When we go to town, you must prayerfully consider your trip because you do not know whether they're gonna come back because the roads are in the worst state ever.
Nginge etalege, oguti, umaspala wa ngagi ti, agesiga, shengoba, nao, un, un, aligned, realigned budget for a certain period. Manje, mimi ngichabule, nguti, segukona, abazonge melela, iska kulaza, tinestale makaya. Esene, in, in, ngalesimo sokukuku, kuka gue zulu. Gune, nde, nenkuluma, ngje, ngia representative, ngoba, ngmile, in, ngieko. Oge, ngene, in zulu, emzino, mundu, li xaye, lipupise, kufenongo, mundu, guneyo, guneyo, ngaleso skati. Ngenma, yokukuku, kuka gue simose zulu. Asin nao, amalit kondata, sinayetale.
Yeah, I, thanks. I won't be criticizing on, on my local government due to bad roads, but it's this climate change. And we've got families in our area that I'm speaking on their behalf. You find a family being wiped out, completely destroyed by lightning, you know, and it all points to this ever-changing climate change.
Nginge etale, ubhoni betu, ngoba, sa pinde, lokuti, banu, nanile, male, banu, niwa, yaba, sebenza, lapesuwa. Kepanyelje lumonaga, lo oswe yona, siyatinizala, esesoslegelela, gulekinga, espregene.
I'm not criticizing our local government, but I know that they've got limited budget, but we're happy to have you because there's gonna be some other interventions to help our communities.
Ngasbongela lakulu.
Thank you so much.
It's okay. Good day to the honorable members of parliament and all attendees.
Sen bengalela malu, ngashonpe, gile, parlamenta?
I am Mrs. Mogi Munzami.
Mrs. Munzami.
From the Department of Education, component EC Posetu Primary School.
From EC Posetu Primary School.
Lindalani Ward Five. I am a resident of Kwadugosa.
Ye, lialakona, lagwatu, gusin.
I am glad that climate change is finally taking important aspect in the parliament.
Seabong, ngitiparlamenta, selau, nagegelela, ndaba, eh, climate change?
Something that is long overdue.
Intukfana, ngabe, sa, kala, dalu, isebenza.
We have sat here for four hours, listening to many parties speaking today with various reasons why this bill should be rejected.
Sessalela, amahora, manesalela, ikulume zatugatugana, bashi, za, puti, ye, nilomteto, zvivinyo, ngmela, ukritu.
Your points are duly noted.
Imbono, eh, no, ye zwaala.
For this bill to be successful, it should start on ground level. Meaning, various stakeholders should meet and put their ideas together, problems, and also come up with various solutions. It's very easy to point out so many problems and when you don't come with any solutions.
Nilomteto, zvivinyo, fana, lubuwe, lebanthu, nilapa, pans, mazin, ansaba kuluma, inkenga, bakuluma, ne, tlazululu. Nganoba, guluwa, yu kuluma, nginkenga, ona, zukutsetinis, tlazululu, sakon.
Thereafter, this should be submitted to upper structures where they reset to put another bill together into considering all the parties. As I mentioned, I am in the education section. The key to starting a decrease in pollution and reducing climate change lies with our future leaders, that is our learners in the schooling sector.
Ndjengoba, ngishilo, mpumeskolene, nyafundesa, nyako lelo, puti, ukuku, kukuru, olupelele, lo kala, lapaya, kuba, holbe, tibaksasa, esenganene, lapema zenge, napants.
Oh, best to cascade information to parents and the community than the thousands of children in schools.
Eh, gioba, hioboga, bazulisolo, mlazo, bazale, makaya, nawo, banjo, zagwabo, in kuluma, ne, zezinyi, esenganu.
In the Ilame district, the Department of Agriculture and Environment Affairs work with some schools or belong to the Seep Environment Projects. We have an official that visits all Eko schools.
Lana Ilame, Eko, leza, sebenza, no, nyango, eh, we, 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 zolimo, eh, ganyene, zemvelo, ogu, kuma, na, ne, zenyi, kolu, kfungesa, abangan.
But I am appealing that this should not be a choice. It should be every single school that should be part of this environment project.
Eh, ngo kwame, ngitiloku, anga, be, intomutai, ketilai, kotwa, agube, in, nganyi, yasozoki, kolu, putu, wongu, mfundi, abe, in, nganyi, yai.
Simple things like cleaning up of the communities should be a starting point as dumping sites all over are increasing.
Intoka, nganjego, puti, uku, ku, clean, no, inda, wabanta, balala, guso, fana, lube, intenzo, wongu, munti, nganoba, in, dowo, zoglax, unngola, sezianda, ngendela, ekagin.
A clean environment is a safe environment.
In dowo, eltanzagile, in dowo, appi.
Fires should be implemented on dirty sectors and unnecessary fires due to the lack of bin bags to properly dispose of litter.
Ezimboni, ezzi, ezzi, tutugesa, ogunngola, fana, lezi, chesi, swa.
Or positive reinforcements of incentives should be offered to communities and schools.
Ganjalo, ne, mpagati, na, yo, eku, mbesugula, nogunngola, eh, ma, ibe, nenjela, yo, kutazo.
Climate change reduction starts with us in the simplest of forms, then targeting the industries and other sectors.
Oh, len, dabayo, kukuku, kuka gue simose zulu, plikala, ngatimo, eh, ngapambuti, yo, figa, emboni.
Education is a key to success, let us use this system.
Assebenzi, sege, ne, ne, nenjela, yo, pila, yetu, yes, mfundo, ogu, kukula, lenkinga, espregene.
If people took the time to read today's bill properly, they would see that it covers a lot of aspects, but it can be amended accordingly after today's session.
Eh, umaba, nbe, fundelele, nilomteto, zvivinyo, bayabonu, puti, esegenzwe, impela, eh, kotwa, ingapinde, ishikilelu, oguse, sewazugun, mobile, nkinga, espregene.
Thank you.
Seabong.
Thank. Thank you, thank you, program director. Greetings to chair of the Portfolio Committee.
Sibengalelu, sitalo, sibongeni, turo.
All, all protocols observed. My name is Dr. Kulegani Frey Mzungu.
Dr. Kulegani Zungu.
I'm an agriculturalist by profession, a farmer.
Eh, ngumlimi, sebenza, ezolimo.
Mister Chair, the bill itself, I've read through. There are a number of pieces of legislation that empowers communities and municipalities and government departments.
Ipili, ngifundele, in, emteto, emnandi, eh, tutugesa, enegesamandla, mpagati, kajalo, nogulumeni.
Mister Chair, the bill itself, it also covers a number of areas at a community levels.
Puti, nilomteto, zvivinyo, tintene, dowo, ezimbalua, eh, tintu, mpagati, mo.
Including the vulnerabilities of communities when industries are given permits and licenses to operate.
Ganjalo, noksukmese, ka, we, mpagati, uma, ezimboni, ezinegesoma license, puti, bassebenza, ez, maeni.
As an agriculturalist, Mister Chair, I've observed.
Eh, njengamlimi, sitalo, senbonile, ngbugile.
Over a number of years, the climate change.
Eh, puti, ngimnyaga, emne, ngesipilele, ngibonile, uishincha, isimo, se, 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 se.
Sezulu. Thank you so much. We used to measure our crops by the rainfall patterns.
Sa si chwale, ogokala, isi vunusetu, ngenvula, esasi thola.
Which is no longer the case.
Manje, aisahambi, ganjalo, ichingilizindu.
The rains that we, we, we receive are excessive and damaging into our crops.
Imvule, si thula, manje, izama wala, ipupesa, ijal.
The rains that we receive are rains that you cannot measure and, and, and be able to plan accordingly.
Imvule, si thula, yo, aisasi, we, jalo, zetu, eh, gue zolimo.
The bill therefore, Chair, I would like to propose that the bill be passed and the implementation of the bill be monitored strictly by various government departments.
Nyapagamis, agutigele, bill, ayipasi, so, ishikilelu, ubo, mnteto, kotwa, ogusabenza, wa yo, iphe, gue, zin, tlaga, ne, nyango, etlobo, etlobo, kahulumeni.
In particular, at municipal levels, district and municipal level and provincial, there must be stronger teams to monitor the compliance of the bill.
Kakuluka, zlapo, gisfundana, gomaspala, magube, yibaba, bega, mo, puti, eh, imteto, ebeki, we, ilomteto, yalandela, ngendela, efane, legile.
And I would like to appeal to my mayor, in particular, Ngaduguza, to implement a team that will monitor the implementation of this bill.
Si kela, ne, mayor, ye, thula, lagwatu, gus, puti, ilanganisa, itimba, eh, ezobegelela, puti, lomteto, u, umosushai, we, uyanzaga, ngembela, mpagatin.
And the bill to be workshop at a world level, at a VT level, and at any community gathering, the bill must be workshop properly.
No, puti, mnteto, abantu, mabaklaklash, bafunde, swa, ema, watin, bafunde, swa, ma, VTs, bafunde, sala, balala, ngon, zonki, tlaga, zon, mpagata, zitoli, loklaklash, zukon, dega, shengoba, lomteto.
Lastly, eh, 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 Chair, I would like to appeal to those who have raised here that there are police who are collecting monies outside, to please come out now and be responsible to honor to that so that we can nip that now and not tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Pagamis, nagusa, we, tutlava, bate, ngnamapoisa, ala, manjonjo, lapana, lapaya, avize, ni, no, mapoisa, nivula, matala, oguse, le, ngkinga, siso, eketa, ngia, konamangi.
Sowrat. Eh, nyabengalela, mchila, alo. Eh, ikama, nguntutsugo, ngwa, amsa, ne, ngsowa, endwe, dwe, watu.
Greetings, Chair. My name is Tutugum Sanne from Dwe Dwe Watu.
Eh, ipili, nyeh, nyeh, vumele.
I support the bill.
Kotwa, ma, nguti, izo, tusugisabanda, basha.
But on, on condition that the bill is, will, will give opportunities for development for young people.
Ngwa, mas, ngakuluma, climate change, ngjeskolene, ngwa, amati, ngutale, fundu, creditsen, climate change, ayazi, yonki, into, ufundu, mntukredle, ezipali, cheste, climate change.
Because the, the, the issue of climate change has been overemphasized. You go to a, 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 a school children, grade ten, grade eleven, they know about it, they can even write essays on that.
Ukona, abanta, abenzochokraft, history, abata, bawaz, uchilu, utisimo, sezulu, namshang, desobanji. Kotwa, labo, antek, tunen, asbabonbe, bepumelale, bafundi, banetifige, tibasale, makaya, ma, oguti, le, bill, izo, tutugisabanda, basha, kase, supporters, ngabanda, basha.
There's people who are highly learned in geographies, in history, they can tell us so much about weather patterns and so on, but all those people are sitting at home that are unemployed with all their certification. So if this bill is to help young people, I support.
Eh, no, puti, se, eh, la, fu, puti, ma, be, kubeza, be, pasisa, ngwa, ayagapasi, sashurumbodula, ma, be, pasisa, se, afis, wusbenga, bugele, gakulinda, isemakaya, ngobinda, isemakaya, utzulutu, aznama, truck, atesutoti, aznama, zindeyning, kotwa, ina, go, tematsewin, etsewin, zakuluka, kuno, bimu, otzulutu, lata, kono, toti, yonki, into, asetsewin, isele, gilu, ngia, isemakaya, go, temasakaya, makaya, abantu, makona, kuno, koko, etun, be, be, kule, be, kuluso, yonu, umongolilo, mas, ngalu, misal, zidwa, akuluma, mshampe, isad, Afrika, ngaba, rat, nyabong.
When this bill is passed, to not pay attention to rural areas, eh, put some infrastructure to assist people with waste management and so on. There's elderly people in rural areas too, but only cities have got those facilities, not rural areas. Yeah.
Seabong, thank you very much. Eh. Executive Mayor Nyak, there are issues that are raised that relates to your municipalities.
Eh, mayor, gunesi, ndaba, zitinta, umaspala, wakono.
Um, please take it.
So, nige, zitoba, opefumule.
Okay, um, thank you, um, Chair, person. Maybe I'll start with the issue which was raised by Ward Three resident. Unfortunately, I did not get her name.
Seabong, astalan, ala, ngaleve, le, gua, three, ikama, nyalko.
I, yeah, she said she's coming from Kotalani VT, where there's no electricity.
Ute, upume, Kotalana, ngakese, kon.
Um, in fact, we have 1,173 applicants who are indigent in the whole of Kwaduguza.
Sinayetale, is more than 1,700, zabanta, banga, sebenzi, abab, pisupagalukese.
Um, nyatsiga, the area which is in Ward Three is an Eskom supplied area.
Lapawa, nyatsigas, gua, three, nda, eh, nagelela, Eskom, ngokes.
Yes, but I'm not saying we're not going to assist those residents or applicants from that area or from that ward.
Asit, nyakeskonu, kfe, nyela, ngosizo, kula, aboa, balapa ya, eh, gua, three.
Then on the issue which has to do with Lafaj or DCLM.
Eh, ne, ndaba, le, tintu, Lafaj, not DCLM.
We're going to ask the Department of Health to intervene.
Eh, sizo, tintana, no, nyango, wesampilo, puti, awangelele, ngokshesh.
Um, eh, the issue of Ilame. Then the issue of Ilambé and water challenges, then again, we're going to engage Ilambé because I understand that there are water sinkers that supply water. Okay. Then the involvement of traditional leadership, I think that one was raised by Linda Minai from Ward 24. We have a good relationship with traditional leadership. We form parts of Kwaduguza Council. We do invite them in our programs. This one was raised by a lady from Ward 7. Okay, the issue of the awareness campaigns is noted. And we'll also try to beef up the disaster team. Yeah, I think these are the issues which were raised by the people from Kwaduguza.
Thank you very much, Councila Nyaga. If there are issues that you want to follow up, there are world committees, there are world councilors. What else? CDW, DUF, Community Development Workers.
The answer is yes.
There are many structures there and councilors. Let's go and speak about climate change. Where's Tina because it affects us here, Tina, here in KZ and us, we, the people of Kwazulu-Natal. Sir, we agree.
So when you pay, ask you what's your name, you'll tell them, "My name is Lame Change."
Yeah. Then the good, "I love you, what do I stop it, I climate change."
This "I love you" business has got to stop now. Climate change, waya waya.
So, animals.
We together.
We agree.
Do we?
Honorable Weba, what happens from here?
Good afternoon again. I would just like to say, the committee says thank you for every single person that came out today to come and take part of a very important bill for our country and for the world, namely Climate Change Bill. We thank you for every single contribution. Know that we have listened to every single submission. We've noted it. And the Department of Fisheries, Fossaries and Environment will follow up on this and come back to the community on the issues. So we have done already Mpumalanga and Lempapa with these sessions of public participation. We are still for two days more in Kwazulu-Natal. Next weekend we in Haute. And from there on, we will complete all the other provinces still coming. So you can see it's a very long process. Alright. Once everything is finished, the committee will get together and deliberate on all the contents of the bill, your submissions writtenly and orally. Then we will adopt the report and debate it in the National Assembly. So when that process is finished, the bill will go to the National Council of Provinces. Where they then will start with their own legislative processes regarding this bill. And once they are finished with it, it will be sent to the president to ascend and to sign to come into law. The regulations then will be gazetted again. And consultations and inputs will be then considered again before the Act Council process. We really appreciate your time. We really appreciate that you came out for a whole day. And then I just want to say that if anyone still wants to make submissions and they're really, I mean the one gentleman said, they still feel they want to talk, please put in your written submissions. Alright, and there are snacks available for everyone. There is enough. So just in a very nice manner, when we're finished, you can go outside. I'm sure Talika, everything fine, everyone can get their snacks there. Really thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Honorable Weba. Simzul.
There is food at the door.
Okay, I'm going to request that as we leave for item 17. We give respect to the elderly and people with disabilities. May I am going to be the last. Let me take this opportunity to thank you. Thank you very much, the people of Kwazulu-Natal. Particularly the people of Stenga. I want Kwaduguza, yes, Kwaduguza. Thank you for the inputs. Your inputs, I really appreciate. Of course, there are those ones.
We forgive you.
Is this Zulles Shaiklin?
Yes. He is simple. It's missing the point.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's missing the point.
But let's appreciate the inputs that have been made. Appreciate your passion for building a sustainable and secure future. And a prosperous South Africa. We are in transition. We are in a journey. We started in Mpumalanga. We went to Limpombo. This weekend we in Kwazulu-Natal. From here, from here we from Haute we in the northwest.
From Haute in northwest.
So follow us on Twitter. Use that money, get into a taxi so that you can appear on TV. You can say today you don't support the bill. When we get to Google, tomorrow you say, "I support the bill." On Sunday, when we get elsewhere, you say, "I don't support." Just come. But all your views are valuable to us. This is an ongoing process. We'll still hold many public hearings other than, we'll still receive written submissions. Those who want to write to us, they can write to the secretary of the committee. Her name is Chileka Madubela. Taleka.
Taleka.
Yeah. Her name is Taleka.
Taleka.
Taleka Madubela.
Malaku Taleka Mahkubela.
Yeah. Her email address is tmadubela@parliament.gov.za. She receives all the emails that are related to climate change. Her numbers are on Google. If you go to Google and say, "Chileka Madubela", it's giving you a picture, it gives you the phone numbers. But I can also give you the numbers. Not today. Oh, I, she says on Google. But by law, I am supposed to give you this number. Thank you very much, and that is how we close the meeting. Please give yourself a round of applause. Thank you.